Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Granville Education Board of Education meeting. It's so nice that everything turned out from our last meeting. Please join me in the pleasure.
I love it. It's a great evening. It's just a good evening. Yeah. Your kids there?
Okay, they didn't do their job. He said he never had a job. Look at you, Regina.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Either way. Yeah.
He's waving that around.
Five more. No, but it's not. It's walking. There was this question. The clip. Yeah, this person has not quite. Yeah. Yeah. We are happy to talk to you. Yes. Yeah. 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 But I want one that's going to stay right down there. So I'm sure they were like, oh, this is not. Where can we get them? Is that on fashion shelves? I forgot. Okay. Yeah. 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 Okay, they didn't do their job. He said he never had a job. Yeah. 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 Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Granville Education Board of Education meeting. It's so nice that everything turned out from our last meeting. Please join me in the pleasure.
I would like to testify in the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll please. Dr. Corman, here. Mr. Miller, here. Ms. Deeds, here. Ms. Shaw, here. Mr. Wolf, here. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Sure. Second. Right ahead of. Okay, roll please. Ms. Deeds, aye. Mr. Wolf, aye. Ms. Shaw, aye. Mr. Miller, aye. Dr. Corman, aye. Conny, aye. Good.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. I'm going to take this down so I can actually breathe and read. So tonight, we get to commend several groups of athletes and a couple of academic students, and then recognize our board president. So first group that we're going to recognize is our girls' cross-country team. A little about the success they had during their 2021 season. Our varsity team defeated 113 teams this season and lost only 12. Most of those teams that we lost to were D1 teams. They claimed their 14th consecutive league title and their sixth straight district title, and went on to become regional runner-up. They made it their way to the 13th consecutive state meet. At the state meet, we finished three points out of the state title. And that's really interesting in a cross-country meeting. So it's all about positions, and points are really easy to come by or lose. This was the second time in three years that our team has earned this spot. In the 13 visits to the state meet, our team has always finished in the top 10, including this year's Division One, or in the year we were Division One. Of the 175 teams in Division Two, the podium is reserved to the two best of them all. Some of our postseason athletes. Regina placed fifth place, the highest grandwell finish, with a state time of 1818, which is something that would take me about a mile to do. She is also a three-time All-Ohio recipient, first-team LCL, first-team All-District, first-team All-Region, individual state qualifier, academic All-Ohio, All-Ohio fifth, four-year letter winner, LCL Runner-of-the-Year, Team MVP, selected to run for Team Ohio at the Mid East Championship Meet on, well, it was November of 2020. Okay? Zoe ran a PR of 1834 at the state meet, first-team LCL, first-team All-District, first-team All-Region, individual state qualifier, academic All-Ohio, and All-Ohio eighth place, Team MIP. Lily stepped up and dropped over 20 seconds to gain precious points needed to secure the podium finish. She had her, she, had she run her PR, eight additional points would have come in before her, had she not run that PR. First-team LCL, first-team All-District, All-Region, and state individual qualifier. Kara finished, or is first-team LCL and first-team All-District and academic All-Ohio. Lauren ran a PR when it mattered. If she ran a previous PR, 18 points would have come in before her. Second-team LCL, first-team All-District and academic All-Ohio. Emma, second-team All-LCL and first-team All-District. Riley, after being selected as an alternate, stepped up and raced the district. She was an alternate for the regional meet and then stepped up into the state meet again, second-team All-District, academic All-Ohio. Kataria, top seven, but became a freshman who raced the regional, raced the regionals, and served as an alternate at the state meet, always ready to go if needed, second-team All-LCL. Pretty accomplished group. All of that is under the watch of their two coaches, Chrissy Rogerson and Anna Ernst. And I would also like to announce that Chrissy won the LCL Coach Leader. So. So if your letters do come out, I'd like to present you with our external award. Now, we're going to get a picture up here.
We don't.
Yes, we don't.
Thank you.
Oh, awesome. I have a shelf of those.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
Next, we'd like to recognize our Granville Varsity Football Team. The Granville Blue Aces Football Team was 13-0, LCL champs. They have won the Granville High School's first-ever regional championship. The 13 wins are also the most wins in school history. The previous record was 10. Granville High School has previously won two playoff games in school history, and the 2021 team won four playoffs just this year. The Blue Aces were led by 21 seniors, including captains Carson Crouch, Christian Hilton, Cam Wright, and Bobby Baholi. Also leading the team was the LCL and Newark Advocate Offensive Player of the Year, Devin Haley, who rushed for over 2,000 yards and over 30 touchdowns. The Blue Aces were coached by Wes Schroder, who was also just recently named the Division Three Football Coach of the Year. So I, before we recognize them, I also want to say, first, they were really fun to watch. And Carson, you get a special nod because you played through a lot of pain this year, and you really toughed it up. I know I would have been whimpering on the sideline, but all of you provided leadership to that entire team, and you should be commended. It was a fantastic time to watch football, and you guys were good. So thank you very much. And Wes, we have a little act for you, for your Coach of the Year. There you are. Congratulations. Those are some proud hands.
All right, are you guys ready? One, two. That's fine. Okay, there we go.
So I always say, we have tremendous balance of academics, arts, and athletics. Tonight, we get to recognize the Ohio High School Math Invitational Olympiad. The Granville High School's team sent two members, or two students, to the Ohio High School Math Invitational Olympiad at Capital University on November 6th as qualifiers, Lucon and Andrew Harms, 10th and 11th, respectively. To qualify, you had to score in the top 100 in the state in the initial round held at each school. So far, and so for a school of our size, it was fantastic, a fantastic accomplishment to have two Granville students as qualifiers. In the actual competition, Lucon won third place in ciphering, scoring based on answering with speed and accuracy, and sixth place in the individual competition and fifth place overall. So another thing I would not have qualified for as a student. So tremendous accomplishment. Congratulations. Students, come on up. And so for the real reason why you all came, as Dr. Corman suggested, welcome. Dr. Jennifer Corman started her service to the Granville School Board when she was elected in November of 2009 to start her term in January 1 of 2010. She has served as a board member, vice president, and she has presided as president twice, serving multiple terms, or multiple years during her 12-year tenure. She has also served as Granvilles representative to the CTEC Board for 11 and a half of those 12 years. Dr. Corman exemplifies being student-focused with a service orientation to the community, governing with a level head, and modeling the best of civics. It truly mattered to her that we, as a board, served as a role model for our students. Not everything was easy during our tenure. There were challenges like levy failures, challenging policy decisions, but all these issues were handled beautifully, again and again, with the students in mind. Dr. Corman traditionally would always share her thoughts only after her colleagues on the board had an opportunity to share their perspectives. Jen ensured everyone's voice was heard, and she had a pulse for the at-large community perspective. Dr. Corman's humility is refreshing. She is considering she is a very, very bright and accomplished person. There were many notable accomplishments during their tenure on the board, the approval of the Granville Land Lab, revisions to the mission statement, integration of the portrait of a graduate, and so many more. Granville is extremely lucky to have a board member that exudes the competencies we desire for our students, being collaborative, adaptable, empathetic, responsible, being a critical thinker, and being resilient. A lot of the students in this room demonstrated a lot of that during their fall season. You modeled that for them. A board of education is a team. There is no "I" in "team." Coach, this is my best pitch. It's also a family endeavor. So Bibi, thank you very much. Karen is her son, who, you know, went through Granville Schools. I'm sure he's watching somewhere at Duke University. Thank you for supporting Jen's role in supporting this school district and her service to the community. We appreciate everything that you've all done for our community. Jennifer has been a tremendous thought partner and friend to me personally over the last 11 years. I know I will miss her reflections on situations and guidance during difficult times, but she leaves a legacy as a future board aspires to lead. Please join me in thanking Dr. Jennifer Corman for her service to the Granville community and Granville schools. So we have a little tradition in Granville Schools that when someone is leaving our organization or moving on to something, another role, I know we're here, we commission these Blue Aces through the works in Newark, and so you have this clone Blue Ace, and it should serve as your memory of Granville Schools in your service to the Granville community. So congratulations. You're welcome. And I know that your fellow colleagues are going to speak about your tenure, if you want to do it now, or we can do it at board discussion as well. So do you want to say anything?
No.
Really?
I don't want to.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, you run the meeting, so you can take the opportunity to speak.
I have the power.
Yes.
Just, you know, thank you for, you know, all of your kind remarks and, you know, I'm really proud of what we've accomplished over the last 12 years. It's a lot, and you only mentioned a few things. And I'm really proud of our district, and I have to say, last year, when I was talking to my mom about, you know, how well we were doing with the COVID protocols and online and in-person and everything like that, she would then go on to brag to her friends about how well we were all doing. So we have a legacy in Northern Virginia as well. But it's true. I mean, we persevered, and it was, I'm really proud of all that we've done and have been coming through this time. You know, I think Jeff mentioned, and that, you know, I've had the good fortune to work with these board members and other board members, and I am with an administration that has truly operated as a team to create an excellent educational experience for our students. I think we, sorry. I think we take for granted that we work so gladly together, because I don't think that is the case everywhere. So we should commend ourselves on how well we have worked together as a team. And I also like to recognize the teachers, that they have stepped up time and again to meet the challenges that are presented and sometimes drum at them. It's not an easy job, but their passion for education has always shown through in my time on the board. And something that doesn't get mentioned very often is that the most important thing that the board does is to hire the superintendent and treasurer. And I think that, and I have to say, that we have done a spectacular job in hiring Jeff Brown as our superintendent, and then two treasurers during my term, first Mike Sobel and now Brittany. And I have to say that when you hire well, it makes our jobs a whole lot easier. And I really appreciate all the work that you guys do in making our lives actually so much easier as board members. I very much enjoyed working with both of you, not long enough, and then for the past 11 years, so that's been great. Someone recently asked me what I want my legacy to be, and I honestly haven't thought about it. The work we do here isn't about me or any one person. I think that what I would like my legacy to be is a smooth transition and the continuation of all the great work that we've been doing here in Granville Schools. So thank you for the opportunity and for entrusting me with this ever-so-important resource in our community. I have truly enjoyed my time on the board. Thank you very much.
Now, this concludes our commendations, and we're going to move into our regular meeting, so this is the time where most of you will want to leave. You're welcome to stay.
You can take a chair.
I swear I'm a lady.
Here.
Listen, careful.
Right, ready, set.
It's a rocket scratch.
Oh, you know why. I just want to start and take this opportunity to express my thanks, and, you know, starting in a new district and moving across the state is a big life change, and so I just want to say thank you for always being supportive to me. It is so important to have the support of the board here in this position, and I can truly say that I have that general interview from all of you, and I just really, really appreciate that, and will definitely miss your leadership on the board to thank you for all that you've done for us all. All right, and now on to the monthly financial report. Okay, so the cash balance for November compared to last November, we are up about 5.4 million from where we were last year, and this is due to the carryover cash balance from last year, as well as the continued phase in of the income tax. So when we pass a new levy, it makes sense that we would be continuing to grow our cash balance. We are still on a downward trend for overall cash throughout the year. You can see the cyclical trend that we'll continue to see till January when we grow that cash balance back up again. For, on the revenue side, for the month of November compared to last November, local tax revenue is up, and that is really a timing issue of when we received our homeback and homestead payment this year compared to last year. So that's just timing, and then the other two line items are relatively flat with where we were last year. On the state revenue piece, I just want to mention publicly that the new funding formula has not been fully implemented in the actual payments that we are receiving. So we are being funded for those students who are educating. We don't have the tuition payments coming out anymore, but all of the other components have not been fully implemented. So that was delayed from October to December, and then now to January. So hopefully, by the time I'm presenting next month, we will be able to say that that's actually been fully implemented, and we can talk more about that at that time. Year-to-date revenue for the local tax reimbursement line item is up in total compared to last year, and again, that's probably due to timing of the income tax. We are probably still seeing some of the effects of the delay in the income tax filing deadline from last year, so that may level out when we get that next payment in January. And then all other revenue is going to continue to be up this year due to the larger return of advance that we had from the ESSER grant fund. On the expenditure side, relatively flat in the purchase service and all their expenses, and then our typical salary and benefits increase due to steps and base salary increases. So what we would expect to see there. And then year-to-date expenditures, this $45,000 over here on the right, I do an adjustment every month because it's a little, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. So after adjusting for, we had a double, double up on an insurance payment last year in July, and then this year, we don't have tuition payments coming out. So after adjusting for those two items, expenditures are actually up $632,000, which is a lot, which is in alignment with the forecast. It's a reasonable increase, but I just want to note that, because it is a significant difference when you actually do that comparison to make it apples-to-apples. Okay, the second piece of the financial report this evening is going to be a little more in-depth about a new funding source. The ARP, IDEA, and IDEA preschool funds require us, and these are all related to additional COVID dollars, so this is part of my COVID funds update, but specifically, these funds require a public presentation and the opportunity for public comment when proposing how we're going to spend these funds. So that is to meet that, this presentation is to meet that requirement. So our total allocation is 120, about $125,000, and for IDEA, and then the preschool, is an additional $9,000. The period of availability of these funds is slightly different than the other COVID dollars, which all date back to March of 2020. These funds are available as soon as we submit the application, which, we can't submit the application until we have this public comment, so we plan to do that tomorrow, so we can essentially spend from tomorrow through September of 2023. They must be specifically utilized for special education students, and there's a supplement, not supplant, rule associated with these funds, which is also unlike the other COVID dollars, so it should not be used to more in-depth about a new funding source. The ARP, IDEA, and IDEA preschool funds require us, and these are all related to additional COVID dollars. So this is part of my COVID funds update, but specifically these funds require a public presentation and the opportunity for public comment when proposing how we're going to spend these funds. So that is to meet that, this presentation is to meet that requirement. So our total allocation is about $125,000, and for IDEA and then the preschool is an additional $9,000. The period of availability of these funds is slightly different than the other COVID dollars, which all date back to March of 2020. These funds are available as soon as we submit the application, which we can't submit the application until we have this public comment. So we plan to do that tomorrow. So we can essentially spend from tomorrow through September of 2023. They must be specifically utilized for special education students. And there's a supplement, not supplant, rule associated with these funds, which is also unlike the other COVID dollars. So it should not be used to replace local dollars. We have something called maintenance of effort, where each year we have to spend the same amount on special education services out of our state and local funds. So we have to continue to maintain that even though we're utilizing these funds. And then the last component is there is a non-public portion. So out of our $125,000, about $5,000 is non-public that we vote to Granville Christian. So how we intend to spend these dollars is going to be very similar to how we utilized the IDEA restoration funds the last two years. Those expenses would have otherwise gone back into the general fund. So we are able to continue to spend out of federal dollars or probably into next year with the behavioral specialist. So in a way, we are offsetting what would be a general fund expense, but since it was federal dollars last year, it's allowable to continue that way. So $108,000 is going towards a behavioral specialist, and that is contracted through the EFC. That amount should get us through the rest of this year and then part of next year, I believe, as well. Then we have $12,000 that we have allocated to scanning and indexing our special education student files. So the alternative is the hard copies go in boxes to off-site storage, which is very inconvenient when you need to access those files. So that's a really nice thing that we're able to utilize these dollars to not have to deal with those hard copies and getting them off-site from off-site storage. And then the final piece for the preschool dollars is instructional services. So we're actually able to funnel the $9,000 directly into the Lincoln County Consortium, and they become the fiscal agent for those dollars. That's how we utilize our regular IDEA preschool funds, so we're able to include those as well. Any questions first from the board on the plan?
I have just a very specific question about the behavioral specialist. Is that someone who is A, full-time and B, supports teachers, supports students, a little bit of both?
Do you want to answer that?
Yep. She is here four days a week, and she does both. She works directly with students and then works with staff as well and works in supporting kids who have identified behavior needs.
That was my question.
That was a great question, wasn't it? And thank you, Glenn.
You're welcome.
Okay, then at this time, I'll ask if there is any public comments specifically related to this plan. There will be opportunity for general public comment later in the agenda. No? Okay, great. So moving on then, I have added these two sources to our chart here and actually kind of changed this so that the bars represent the total allocation by source. And then the blue is the total expenditures to date and the orange is the balance that we have remaining. So you can see four of the sources have already been fully expended, and then we have four remaining left to spend. We also just found out on Friday that we will have additional Esser dollars coming. So the General Assembly is allocating some of what was open for them to allocate specifically to school districts to increase each district's allocation to $1,000 per student. So looking at the initial estimates of what that amount would be, it's going to more than double what our Esser 2 and Esser 3 total was. So that plan we'll be working on over the next couple of months, and we'll have that added to this report in the future so that we can track those dollars as well. So that's very exciting that they're able to do that so that we can utilize more of those federal dollars in the most efficient way that we can.
And so that's about an additional $1.2, $1.3 million?
Yes.
Of federal funds that's being allocated by the state to Granville?
Exactly. Yep, that's correct.
And that?
Yep. Yeah, that's great.
And those, those do have timeframe which we have to spend them in.
Yeah, so I actually, I know this is really impossible to read, and your printed copy will hopefully be easier to see, but related to this for myself so that I can start keeping track of all of these different sources and when we have to use them all by. So a lot of what we have right now has to be used by September of 2023. I imagine the new funds being allocated by the General Assembly will have the same deadline. I don't know for sure, but I imagine, but it will be restricted, like these dollars, to COVID-specific and there'll be a whole plan and application we'll have to put together though. So it's not like we can spend it on just anything. And then jumping back just really quick to this graph here, this is all font, are all sources of COVID-related funds and how we have either expended them already or how we have them budgeted. And I just wanted to point this out because we did make some changes here from last month. So we originally had an allocation for an additional custodian. It's clear we're not going to be able to get that. We are understaffed on our current custodial contract. So we have shifted gears there and we're actually putting that towards a couple of positions that we're looking to fill to help support and directly deal with instruction with students at GES and GIS. So we felt that that was a greater need and something that we could actually accomplish with those dollars. So we have reallocated that. So I wanted to mention that. And then we also have on here the behavior specialists and scanning project now as well. So those are the changes to this graph. And we are able with that. And then we have our cash reconciliation. And that concludes the financial report unless there's any other questions.
Could you run back to our charts of the total funding, federal funding coming through the different mechanisms? There we go.
Yep.
I guess I didn't add those up, but it's got to be with the new funds as well, over $3 million probably?
Yeah.
Of federal funds that are flowing directly to the Granville schools. So that will have a significant impact on our cash balance, which, you know, we'll have to start thinking about as we think about the levy cycle and when that happens and how we do the renewals of the various levies that we have out there. But that's a big driver of our cash, and we have to think about how to manage that, right? And understand that a lot of that's was sort of out of our control in a wonderful way. And great especially to this recent announcement of, you know, $1.3 million additional and sort of unexpected relative to what we just knew last month. So we'll see where this all goes and so forth, but you know, I think we need to ensure that although we have a significant cash balance, we continue to manage the district appropriately, right? And look at each expense and understand how it can truly benefit the state and do the right thing across the board there. So it's big news that we've got all these funds coming in. We just need to make sure we stay on top of that and allocate appropriately and continue to manage responsibly.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. So although some of these expenses are, you know, either one-time expenses or truly expenses that wouldn't have happened if not for COVID, i.e. cleaning supplies, there are other creative ways that I've talked about that we have been able to utilize these dollars that are directly impacting our total operating cash balance. And so that is a really great point, that that is having a positive impact on that side of the equation as well. So, and you?
I also just want to reference, so there are two individuals, Jonathan Cooper out of Mason and Tom Hostler out of Carisburg, who both are part of the Alliance for High Quality Education. They really spearheaded the General Assembly conversation about their allocation and what to do. The way that Esser dollars and our dollars were allocated were, was through census data based on Title I, but it wasn't necessarily an accurate dataset. So that was pointed out to the General Assembly. The range of per-student dollar amounts in Ohio were zero and only tangy. They literally got no dollars whatsoever to a high of $18,000 per student in the Cleveland Metropolitan Schools. Not to say that that's not something that they need, but it was something that when you looked at it on paper, you said this doesn't really make sense. Our initial allocation was about $33,000 per student, and now we're up to $1,000. But that would not have happened without the Alliance, Jessica Odalini, Jonathan, and Tom really working with the General Assembly to get that. It helps that Senator Brenner's district, home district, was only tangy, who got zero. Sometimes it did pay. So, but it's, it's a step in the right direction to help support the additional expenditures related to COVID.
Thanks for adding to that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm not going to get up and talk. I'm just going to sit here and share a brief update. So as we head into the winter break, which is hard to believe that we're here at this point in the school year, based on the numbers and the fact that we have had some changes in the quarantine process and guidance from the Lincoln County Health Department, over the break, we're going to be removing the plastic barriers that are in the cafeteria. Those barriers are starting to get worn to the point where they fracture and break. And they, they aren't serving a real benefit in the quarantining process. We thought they were going to, but they didn't. So we are going to be removing those, and we have a group of volunteer parents that are going to help disassemble and store those for us, which is very nice. Speaking of parent volunteers on the agenda, we have six parent volunteers that are going to be board-approved. They are going to be allocated to the elementary and the intermediate school cafeterias to support teachers. One of the things that has been happening is a lot of teachers are losing critical planning time because they have to cover, because they don't have subs. So I'm going to speak about the subs in a little bit, but we thought about, you know, how can we best utilize parents that want to volunteer? Cafeteria is a great opportunity. They're going to learn how to open milk carts. They're going to learn how to get ketchup packets open. I think Amy does it better than anyone else. She wears an apron and it's a smart move. So, but that's another way that we're starting to look at ways to kind of move towards a more normal experience. And so we're going to start looking for ways to have more parent volunteers come in and support the efforts of the school district. So we're happy about that, but we're going to do it in a safe and effective manner. The current numbers, we are at, for the last four weeks, we've been averaging between eight and 10 cases a week. And that has been relatively stable and where last year, at that time, there was a significant increase. Now, in Lincoln County as a whole, we're still seeing an increase in cases, but as far as the school district and school-aged students, we are not seeing that increase. So we hope that that continues. We are still having students that are between the ages of five and 11 going to the vaccination clinics, and there are multiple in multiple locations around the county that are facilitated by the Lincoln County Health Department. I mentioned substitutes. If you also look at the consent agenda, we have about 15 new subs that we are going to be adding. If you remember at the last board meeting, you adjusted or passed a resolution to have additional substitutes, have more flexibility in the qualifications. What's, what's interesting is the majority of them have the same qualifications. They just didn't necessarily know that they, they had the ability to sub for us based on their, their previous bachelor's. So Tanya, where's Tanya? Congratulations. Thank you very much for getting all of those people on board. We're looking forward to them helping us in the classrooms. So we've done a couple of different things to try and increase the pay and utilize building subs a little bit more, again, trying to address some of the shortages that we have. There are areas of critical need, bus drivers, substitutes, food service, that we're like every other sector in the world right now, the public and private sector. We're competing for, you know, people to do work within the organization. And I think we have a great organization. It's very rewarding. Get to work with kids. And if anyone out there is listening and you want to work for Granville schools, this is the time to put in your application. So we are very excited to get to our winter break and then come back in January and start the second semester off strong and, and finish another great year in Granville schools. There's a lot of things to celebrate. We, we just talked about a few of them at the commendations, but a lot of great things from the music concerts that have been taking place to plays and all the extracurricular activities that we value as part of a well-robbed education and a whole child education. Kudos again to our teachers for continuing to persevere. Many of them are covering colleagues' classrooms on a daily basis to try and keep us satisfying our mission. So we appreciate everything that they're doing to not only take care of their, their students but others. And that concludes my school update.
It seems like ever since we were hearing about the plexiglass dividers going out, right? And it was community volunteers at the time, right, that were pretty engaged in helping out and supporting that initiative as we were just starting to learn about layers of protection and, you know, what we need to do to protect students. It was a wild bill. It's kind of good to hear that part of it. Hopefully coming to an end in a positive way that we can get back to a more normal where kids are interacting with each other without some of the barriers that have been present these last 18 months. And I think we've just got to continue to be flexible. I'm especially encouraged to hear that we're getting parents and community members back in the schools, right, as substitutes, as cafeteria volunteers, and in all the other ways. And I think that, you know, as we kind of reset out of this pandemic and figure out what that new normal is, you know, community involvement has been one of the hallmarks of Granville schools. And so I hope that we find the right way to integrate, you know, parents and community members back into the schools as much as we're able. And so this is a great step and certainly in a place that's much needed. So that's great news.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I feel so appreciative tonight. Maybe it's the season, but appreciation for Jen and her leadership, you know, for definitely the last two years, which we're extremely trying. And then also appreciation for all the parents and volunteers because I know that as a parent, you know, I know that my children are learning, and that's not something that every parent can say in this country. And happy to be in school and excited and so much conversation at the dinner table. And so I really, really, really appreciate the volunteers, the teachers who are so, I'm sure, exhausted at this point after doing this for a year and a half, two years, almost two full years. So, so much appreciation. And then I think also the idea that, I don't know, I'll just try and think. Just going to give Jen some more praise.
You can think about it in board discussion.
We can do that. Aren't we in board discussion?
No, not yet.
What are we going to do now, Jen? We're discussing the school report.
Yeah.
Shoot. Great report, Jeff.
Thank you.
It's nice to, again, as Thomas said, it's nice to be moving in the direction of getting back to, you know, what we, who knows what normal is anymore, but nice to be getting back to, you know, things are more familiar than, you know, what we've been through the last couple of years. And we, yeah, we stepped up as a district, and it's, you know, it shows. And I feel, you know, again, like I said before, very proud, you know, that we're in the district that we're in. I feel very fortunate. So not luck, it's good hard work that, and for the update. Anything else of school updates? Right, and we are at the point in the agenda where we are going to entertain public comments. If you'd like to address the board, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and speak for up to three to five minutes. Would anybody like to address the board at this time? Okay, board discussion.
Let me jump in real quick about operations committee meeting. I just finished earlier this afternoon, and I'll just give the board a quick update. Tony Sherwin does a great job of leading our operations, and as a part of that, hosts the superintendent's committee for operations and resources.
for Operations and Resources. There was a lot that went on through there. We had a great representation of community members and staff members and some consultants that joined us. A couple of little highlights. One was around food services, right? And John Harbaugh gave us a great review of the status of food services, which have been challenging given all the shortages and from labor to food and so forth. But again, I'm really proud of how our district has done. And we're coming through that very well. We also had an update from Go Sustainable, who's an outside consultant that reviews our energy usage in our building. And it was brought up that we've had a lot more energy usage over the last couple of years. I believe in large part because of our efforts to keep clean air in the building, recirculate air and things like that. And so there's a cost to that from an energy perspective, but one that I think we were expecting and knew about, that we have to kind of understand that trade-off and balance. And I don't think it's anything that's gonna be too drastically different from a budget perspective. I think they were wise decisions. But it also brings up the opportunity to continue to manage and monitor that because energy is a huge part of our cost in terms of running our buildings. So there's always opportunities, you know, as we go up to then to monitor the systems and ensure that we have the right, but not too much fresh air recirculation, especially at times like this when it's cold out. But there was that. We also heard a little bit about our custodial situation, which has been also challenging because of staff recently. And we hear feedback from, you know, kids and parents that the schools, it's challenging to keep things clean. And a lot of folks are stepping up above and beyond to try and help out with that. But in reality, until we get fully staffed again, which I think we're on the verge of right now.
Yes.
And we've got a commitment from our partner to be able to bring us back into what we consider our standard. And there's been some metrics established around that so that hopefully, starting next year, we'll have a better coverage of that and be back to the normal in terms of keeping our buildings clean today. And lastly, in transportation, once again, you know, staffing has been a challenge in transportation, but our Transportation Department has really stepped up there and found ways that anybody that is in that department that can drive, including our mechanics and so forth, are driving when it's needed. And so we've been better off than many districts around the state, from what I've heard, in terms of managing our transportation situation. So it was a good update meeting. And I always appreciate that other community members are willing to join and give us their opinions and be a part of that system. So thanks, Tanya, for leading that. And it was a good meeting.
Cecile, now is the time. I wanna give you that opportunity.
I can let other people speak as well. I mean, Jen does, okay, fine. That can nice, Tanya. I think Dr. Foreman has done an amazing job of listening and teaching me how to listen to all sides. And I think that's something that I hope we also continue as a part of your legacy because it's really important. And it just kind of reminds me of how with parents coming back into the schools and volunteers coming back into the schools, that we are such a small community. And if we don't listen to each other, we're not gonna benefit from kids. And that's another thing that I think gets really brought to the table is that we're always trying to figure out what is the best for children. And I think that you've done such a really amazing job of that in the last two years as I've watched you up close, you know, grapple with really hard issues that your, you know, your scientific brain is saying, wait a minute, should we do this? And your board president brain is saying, yeah, we also need to make sure that we're able to write for the kids, you know, and keep in balancing those two things. So I appreciate that. And I hope I can continue, you know, remembering in the back of my head that voice of, Jen, listen to this.
Well said, Cecile. Again, I think that Jen, you've really exemplified, I think, what makes our community great is that we have a lot of individuals that are of very strong individual character and capability. And you're certainly at the top of that list in terms of your professional ability to understand situations and so forth. You've been very willing to clearly communicate your perspective and equally willing to listen, right? And I think that, I hope that our community continues to have strong and diverse opinions, right? And I think that's something that we've worked very hard to model on the board for how we can be a diverse group of people with a singular focus on the best outcome for our students in our schools. And so I appreciate you setting us up on the right track there. I think that's been a fantastic example. And I'm looking forward to trying to keep that up in your absence. So thanks for letting me.
Madam President, I want to thank you for your experience and your commitment and your leadership for our community. I think you set the perfect example of what a public servant should be. And it's with your tone, your behavior, and your respect for people. I really think it's an example that I hope our community sees that you listen, you share, but it sets the right tone. And as the President, as Thomas mentioned, you've set the tone for the board. And it's been a real privilege to serve with you and to learn from you about what it is to be a member of the school board. So I thank you very much. And on behalf of the community, thank you so much for your commitment.
The only thing left to say is I miss you so much. We've been together the whole time.
Yeah.
So it will be, yeah. I will definitely, you know, people are like, oh, you're dancing and you're jumping around, you know, for joy. And I'm like, you know, no. This is good work, right? And it's very meaningful. And I often have found it, I told this to Jeff, more meaningful than my job, so. And so it's been, you know, it's been an honor to be able to, you know, do this work and get to know all of you. And I've learned equally as much from you guys. And, you know, we don't all have the same perspectives. And I appreciate everything that we all bring to the board. But it's always been, you know, meaningful discussion. And, you know, I, you know, I just, I always assume that this is just the way the boards work. And I don't, I don't think that's true everywhere. And so I feel very, you know, fortunate that, you know, we can have open discussions and that the community can come and speak again. And that, you know, we don't always agree, but, you know, we also, you know, are pretty strong moral stability towards each other. So I'm not that one, you know, seeing everybody, you know, once a month if not more often than that. So it will be, you know, maybe I'll just have to emulate Mr. Denise and come to a meeting every now and again. And I should also, it's really embarrassing that Jeff thanked my husband and I didn't.
You got your.
Yeah, that's a little embarrassing. So I wanna thank him for all the support he's given me and my son over the past 12 years because I definitely, it would've been a lot harder of a job to do if he weren't there, supporting me and listening and, you know, reading things that I write and, you know, that kind of thing. So thanks to you, too. Okay, anybody else wanna give me some praise? I should have did that.
Okay. 10.01 is the establishment of the President Pro Tem for the January 2022 organizational meeting. So moved.
Second.
So as Vice President of the current Board, we have moved Travis into the President Pro Tem for the organizational meeting. First order of business is to establish the next President of the Board. So.
President and Vice President.
President and Vice President, yes.
Any questions about how this is gonna work? Take roll, please. Ms. Shaw. Mr. Wolf.
Aye.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Dr. Foreman.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is 10.02, approval of the agreement with Clyde Giffen's son. This is for renovations to the district office.
Totally. Second.
So as part of the desire to increase airflow and take care of some HVAC issues that have been at least a legacy since I have been here in district office, we're gonna start doing some reworking of offices to create more private spaces and also work on the HVAC within this district, or district office.
I also like that that one office that's in the conference, you can only access from the conference room, will now be a part of the office.
Yes.
Is Carrie who's in there?
Yes, currently, yes.
Yeah, she can be part of the office, too.
Yeah. Yeah, we call it the closet. It was.
Yeah, so that's kind of nice that that's gonna now, you know, bring her into the...
Yeah.
Although she might not be in there. Whoever's gonna be in there. Whoever's gonna be in that space, so that's good. Any other questions are coming? Take roll, please. Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Ms. Shaw. Mr. Wolf.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Dr. Foreman.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the Power School Support Agreement with Meta for $26,000. So moved. Second. Okay, so we are currently in conversation with Power School. We are all, we are transitioning our CIST information system to from Dazzle. LACCA has been supporting us. The person who has been the point person for that transition has become sick and will not be able to provide support. So we're working with Meta to provide support with the data migration setup and training. And then we're going to have some offsetting deductions through Power School. They've already agreed to, or some of the previous contracted agreements to offset that additional expenditure.
Does Power School replace Progress School?
Yes.
Okay. And that is, that connects to Schoolage?
Schoolage, yes.
Our Schoolage connect well?
Yes. Power School actually owns Schoolage.
Okay.
So it's fully integrated.
Yeah.
Just explain again sort of the whole system. So what Power School, what's Schoolage and all that?
So we have a data information system currently called Dazzle. It's our student information system. Everything that you put into that system about student performance, demographic information, everything about courses is reportable to EMIS or the Information or Management System at the state level. And so Dazzle has, you know, been rebooted several times. And we're ready to move to a better product of Power School. We'll have our special programs for IDPs, 504s, special needs students embedded in that. Enrollment will be included in that so that enrollment will talk. EFP is the financial component or module of Power School as well. So there's integration there. What we're trying to do is create one big umbrella that has all our data information systems operating within it so that they can talk to one another. Because right now, they do that.
And you've done double entries of things over the years.
Absolutely.
This is a much more efficient.
Yep, for sure.
Any other questions are coming? Take roll, please. Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Wolf.
Aye.
Ms. Shaw.
Aye.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Dr. Foreman.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is 10.04, approval to join the Ohio School Lords Association for the 2022. So moved. Second. And no additional comments?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Any questions? The good membership that have and definitely take advantage of services that they have to offer, so. Any else? We'll take roll, please. Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Wolf.
Aye.
Ms. Shaw. Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Dr. Foreman.
Aye.
10.05 is the approval to join the Ohio School Lords Association Legal Assistance Fund. That's... Second, aye?
We're for it.
Yeah. All right, we benefited from it before in some litigation, so that's advantageous to us.
Any other questions are coming? Take roll, please. Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Wolf.
Aye.
Dr. Foreman.
Aye.
All right, Consent Agenda. Items 1101A through D. So moved.
Second, thank you.
All right, I'd like to highlight a few things, one of which is in the acceptance of donations and grants. We received a manual $15,000 sponsorship donation from Denison University. That is to offset some of the expenditures we have in using some of their facilities and as an overall contribution to our schools, which we appreciate. Obviously, they're trying to be good neighbors and appreciate that donation because it does offset costs. I mentioned the substitute teachers that are retroactive to some of their start dates. We have quite a list, which is very helpful. We have a couple of days of absences. And then the other volunteers are listed down below, number five, which includes the case expelled volunteers that are also referenced in the meeting. And that's it?
I'd be neglectful as a Quanis member not to point out the Quanis contribution to the orchestra.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
I go to the next meeting now.
Yes, there you go. Thank you.
Any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Take roll, please. Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Wolf.
Aye.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Dr. Foreman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the financial section. Item 12.01, approval of the November 2021 financial report.
So moved. Second.
Any additional questions or comments on the financials? Take roll, please. Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Wolf.
Aye.
Ms. Shaw.
Aye.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Dr. Foreman.
Aye.
Item 12.02, approval of the one-year health insurance consultant contract extension with Gallagher Benefit Services. So moved.
Second. Cecile.
So the district has worked with Gallagher for, I don't know, I wanna say about 20 years. But periodically, we do go through a request for proposal process, which we just wrapped up recently, and have decided to take advantage of the one-year extension as part of that contract. And we do not pay them directly. They are compensated through the insurance carriers directly. So I would recommend that we approve that extension with them.
Any comments or questions? Take roll, please. Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Ms. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Wolf.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Forman?
Aye.
Item 12.03, approval of the agreement over Redtree Investment Group.
So moved. Second.
So as we talked about during the financial report, we are in a strong financial position now. And although interest rates are not extraordinarily high, we would like to take advantage of some investment earnings that we can burn from this partnership with Redtree. So they are an advisor, so there's a fiduciary responsibility. They will have our best interests in mind with those dollars, which is unlike a broker who does not have that responsibility. Redtree came and presented at our finance committee, and I think there were some good questions asked. And that group was very impressed with them and supportive of their made forward. And their fee is 10 basis points. So it's about, if we invest $5 million, it'd be like a five, about a $5,000 fee. So they explained that based on their current market, what we would earn additionally on investment earnings would basically cover, more than cover the fee. So it's a win-win solution for us.
Real positive feedback from the finance committee. They had a lot of good, tough questions for them. And it's clear that this is a very professional organization that does this for a lot of those tool districts. We haven't always been in a situation where we've needed their support, but it looks like for the next few years, especially given dynamic markets out there and what the returns are, they're the kind of folks that we can use to count on to stay on top of that for us and invest our funds that we have available to return something better otherwise. So there's a good group.
Do they do homeless schools?
Um, no, not all these schools, public, all public entities though. And I wonder, didn't they say they had like about half of the districts across the state though? So I mean, they're, they're like one of the two main players in state.
And I believe they do primarily schools.
Yes, yeah.
So they do this all across the state and reflect that. And when you have a cash balance, they can help fund appropriate homes for it and monitor that situation, which is, again, never changing in terms of interest rates and returns and great, but so.
And to echo Mr. Miller, the, the folks on the finance committee really did ask some really good probing questions. And I think Redtree appreciated it. And it was, they did a really nice job.
Any other questions are coming? Kate Bropley?
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Dr. Forman?
Aye.
Item 12.04, approval of a grant appropriation resolution for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have a few changes to the grant accounts. Some are related to the presentation, some additional anticipated grants just locally that we are anticipating to receive. So since we're amending this now, trying to get all of these changes wrapped up into one so we can hopefully not have to do this again next month. And then one final change coming with how we send tax dollars to the Granville Public Library. So we are the library's taxing authority. Their property tax revenue comes to us from the county auditor. And so we need to record that as total revenue and total expense before we were basically just reducing the revenue as we issued the check to them. It's a very accounting-based issue that we just need to adjust for our financial statements. So we also have to budget for it and put it into the appropriation. So those are the changes.
Do you have to put the estimate at funds or just just operate?
We do have to. Yes, so we appropriate at the fund level. So any additional dollars that we receive, like the estimate dollars, we have to increase the, change the appropriation for.
Yep, your question. So that, again, when you get money, you don't know it's coming.
Yes.
You're going to have to change.
Yes. And we, I, you know, there's some of the state funds and like stu-, oh, we're also making a change for the student activity funds. So we also build in contingencies to a lot of these funds. So like student activities, we don't know each year how much we're going to need to allocate. So I, you know, do an estimate based on previous years. Well, we have the marine biology field trip coming up this year, which is a significant expense in student activity. So we need to increase that appropriation as well. So, yeah, we base a lot of it off of estimates and prior years and build in contingencies, but there's always things that pop up like that, so.
Any other questions are coming? All right, Kate Bropley?
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Dr. Forman?
Aye.
I'm not going to do it.
They say if you don't adjourn, you're still running.
I have president until the 30th of December, so. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
All right, second.